All right, I'm gonna go ahead and call the regular board meeting of the Board of Trustees to order and ask everyone to please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. All right, roll call, please.
Trustee Saturn.
Present.
Trustee Nerodowski.
Present.
Trustee Graffia.
Present.
Trustee Keenly.
Present.
And Supervisor Sweeney.
Present. All right, any public comment? Yep, if you'd like to, please step over to the podium.
Hello, how are you?
Good.
My name's Aaron Pullen, I'm the President of the Homeowners Association over there in Branniger. Some concerns were when the roads might be starting, as well as maybe the culverts. I know some of the people wanted to get their driveways redone, they're still waiting to hear back from that. If they're getting dug out, or how the street's getting done, they want to go ahead and do their driveway, and the street's too low or too high, and then they get backflow with water. My one resident has a five gallon bucket from a collapsed pipe in his driveway that he's got in there now. Said he's been calling, hasn't got anything back, so that's why...
So, yeah, we recently met with somebody from Forest View. We actually just got bids back, finalized the bid process, so the Highway Commissioner is setting up pre-construction meetings now.
Okay.
But I would reach out to Art Nerodowski, the Highway Commissioner, for the exact timing, but it's scheduled for this fall, it'll be completed this fall.
Okay.
And we can, he can set up a meeting, if you'd like, with the, with your HOA and go through all the schematics, everything you'd like.
Okay, and then, do you know, is that all the roads getting done, or is some patchwork, or...
It's, it's, it's the entire road district for Elk Grove Township.
Okay.
So, we're investing approximately 1.3 million to do all of your subdivision and all the other roads that the Township Highway Department maintains.
Okay, and then, some of the, the culverts, are those, are those a homeowners' deal? I know that, you know, over time, it overgrows and whatnot, and it's been done years ago, but as far as trying to help flow the water, we just supposed to work with our neighbors to try helping get the water out of the neighborhood?
I would, I would, what I would suggest is let Art and the engineer show you exactly all the plans, and then, some of your questions might get answered, and then, any additional questions, we'd be more than happy to answer them, but yeah, we could show you everything from all the drainage that's being put in, all the road, all the roads that are ground down, repaved, everything.
Thank you, sir.
You bet.
I appreciate it.
Thanks for coming.
Thank you. Yes, sir.
Any other public comment? Okay, all right.
Hi, Lynn Strancioni from Forest View. I also wanted to get an update on where we were with the culvert cleanout from the drainage issue that we had a couple of years ago.
Yep, we just, it was from a year ago, but yeah, we met with a representative from your homeowners association, so the game plan on Friday was for him to set a meeting after Labor Day with the homeowners that, that, that are involved, and our engineer is currently going out there and making a plan for what is exactly done, so at that meeting, we'll present what we're proposing, and hopefully, if everyone signs off on that, we'll get going in the fall as well.
Do we need, so I, I know that we'll not get all the homeowners to that meeting, is there an opportunity to get sign off on that for those that can't attend that meeting?
Well, they don't have to be at the meeting to sign off.
Okay.
It just, the, the meeting would be informational, so that everyone could know, we could have more than one, two, more than one meeting, doesn't have to be all at one meeting, but we'll provide you with the information you can convey, but yeah, it's not required that they be at that meeting for them to sign off.
Okay, great, because we'll probably throw something on a newsletter for them, that way, so that they have it, in case they either can't come, or, you know, forget what the expectations are for them.
Absolutely, yep, well, like I said, shortly after Labor Day, we plan to have a meeting, so...
Okay, great, thanks.
Thank you. Any other public comment? All right, item D, consent agenda. Any questions about items on the consent agenda? Can I have a motion to accept the, approve the consent agenda as presented?
So moved.
Moved by Trustee Saturn.
Seconded.
Seconded by Trustee Graffia. Any further discussion? Roll call, please.
Trustee Saturn.
Aye.
Trustee Nerodowski.
Aye.
Trustee Graffia.
Aye.
Trustee Keenly.
Aye.
And Supervisor Sweeney.
Aye. Okay, item E on the agenda, discussion and potential action on approval of minutes. We have the minutes from the regular board of, a regular board meeting for July 23rd, 2018. Any questions about those minutes? All right, hearing none, can I have a motion to approve the minutes from July 23rd, 2018?
So moved.
Moved by Trustee Saturn, is there a second?
I'll second it.
Seconded by Trustee Nerodowski. Any further discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Motion carries. Okay, presentations, Andrew Cachaba recognition, George Bussey.
On behalf of the board, we have a Resolution 2018-05, and this is recognition of superior service for Andrew Cachaba. I'm gonna read this, and then go start. Whereas Andrew Cachaba faithfully served the residents of Elk Grove Township as a trustee for 15 years, whereas she consistently exhibited an unrelenting commitment to ensuring that Elk Grove Township excelled as a governmental body focused on meeting the needs of its constituents, providing superior customer service, and exhibiting uncompromising financial responsibility, and whereas she used her financial expertise and creative thinking to identify numerous opportunities to reduce costs without degrading township services or performance, and which was key in allowing the township to consistently avoid raising taxes, and whereas she went beyond her Elk Grove Township duties to serve on several county and state township organizational boards, such as the Township officials of Cook County and the Township officials of Illinois, always representing her township in a most professional and exemplary manner, whereas she was deeply involved as a leader in numerous local community organizations, such as the Kiwanis, the Rotary Club, and the Elk Grove Township Daycare Center, that were committed to improving the quality of life and opportunities for all residents, and whereas she has earned the respect and appreciation of the Township Board and the residents of Elk Grove Township for her dedicated service, personal sacrifice, deep caring, and many accomplishments as a trustee, and ultimately, as the Board's senior trustee. Now therefore, the Elk Grove Township Board does hereby recognize and extend its sincere appreciation to Andrew Cachaba for her years of dedicated service, not only as a township trustee, but also as a devoted community leader and advocate. Furthermore, the Board thanks her for her humor, her kindness, her energy, and sincerity, which has enriched all of us who have been fortunate to have known and worked with her.
I want to thank my husband, my son Alexander there, the tall one, my son Christian, the strong one over there. Alexander's lovely girlfriend Kate, and there's little Liam, and my daughter-in-law Erica, and there is, oh, isn't my, Rebecca, come here. My son James, and my other grandson Eli, and here comes granddaughter Amani, another granddaughter Savannah.
Do I gotta read it again?
And my, and my daughter Rebecca. Thank you to my family, and to everyone who has supported me over the years, I really appreciate it, and these were very kind. And I appreciate you a lot. Thank you so much.
Yeah, I know. You're not staying, you're not staying for the auditor?
Nice job, George.
Okay. Under presentations, Klein Hall CPAs to report on this year's audit. Please. Thank you.
So, I know we passed out hard copies today, and I believe you were emailing PDFs of the report, so there haven't been any changes since what you've received in a PDF. I'll just go over a few quick highlights, and of course, if you feel, you want to ask me any questions, chime right in whenever you want. The first couple of pages is our independent auditor's report, I always like to talk about that. There we state that we conducted our audit in accordance with general accepted auditing standards, and it's our opinion that these financial statements are recented fairly in conformity with the modified cash basis of accounting. And that's, you know, it's a bit of a qualifier, because you don't have the full accruals and all that, and the township and a lot of other local governments in Illinois thought they were going to have to confer here, because the comptroller of Illinois was playing hardball, because the statutes had said that you're supposed to record, report on the accrual basis, but the governor signed a law just, just in the last couple of weeks, so you're good to continue reporting as you have been, and really, that serves the township. You know, your financial resources tend to be short-term, and aligns with your budget, so there aren't a lot of long-term liabilities or anything that aren't being disclosed. But with that being said, on pages three and four, the entity-wide statements, and these are the same thing as the fund statements, but it's kinda smashed together into one column, and then we include things like depreciation in there. I don't like to spend a lot of time on there, because you live in the budget world, in the fund world. Page seven shows your three main operating funds, that does not include your sewer fund, and you can see here, you had, you know, some operating surpluses, three-quarters of the way down that page, you'll see the sale of the building, that's the revenue coming in there, and that added to your fund balance. Now, you know, your town fund, general assistance, road and bridge funds have decent fund balance, but you know, like, I heard the last person asking questions about the capital work you're gonna have done, you don't have, the township doesn't have any debt, and that's the way the township tends to operate, you, you don't issue debt, and you pay down from your fund balances, so I understand that you, you're not anticipating on issuing any debt, and you'll pay for these projects out of available resources, so that's great. Page 10, then, is your sewer fund, and you can see the results of operations there. You had a little net operating loss for the year, but that fund still has, you know, fairly healthy cash balance, so it's just, it's doing fine. After that, then, are the notes to the financial statements, and I'll just highlight a couple of notes here. Page 15, the note on cash and investments. That's where we state, that's where we talk about custodial credit risk, and all of the township's deposits with financial institutions were either fully insured or collateralized, so eliminating that risk quite a bit there. Page 16 is your fixed assets activity for the year, and you can see the big deletion item there in the building area, that was the book value of the building that you sold. 17 is the long-term liabilities, this is where you can see that you have no debt, you've got some liabilities for compensated absences, if employees were to leave, you might have to pay them for accumulated sick or vacation time, but you have no other form of debt. There's a rather lengthy footnote on your participation in IMRF, and if you look at the bottom of page 20, you see what we, we usually see there is a net pension liability, but the township, right now, as it stands, is a little bit overfunded, so you have a net pension asset. So what's the effect of that? Hard to say, it fluctuates, as I'll show you here in a minute, but it might result in a reduced contribution rate. What's the rate for 18? We should probably know that. Yeah, so it came down, then. So that's good, but if you look at page... Page 25, you can see how that's fluctuated, end of 15, calendar year 15, it was 479 million liability, end of 16, 400,000 liability, end of 17, it switched to a net pension asset. And there's a lot of things that go into that, mostly, you see that your investment income was up significantly during that 2017 period, but you also see a lot of fluctuations and changes in the actuarial assumptions and that sort of thing. Pages 27 and 28, then, are your three main operating funds compared to budget, so their actual numbers compared to their budgets, and then beyond that, the rest of the pages of the report are individual line items compared to their budgets. So, again, fund balances are in good shape, affording the opportunity to embark on some capital projects without issuing debt, I think that's great. Operationally, you know, you guys are doing a great job, you know, our auditors got in and out very efficiently, you know, you have a small office, but you've, everyone takes a good, hard look at things, we just had a couple of fine tuning points that weren't too impactful. Lately, we've been commenting a lot on credit cards and purchasing cards, because one of our school districts had an issue there here recently, so we, you know, like to remind the board that it wouldn't be a bad idea to have a formal policy on the administration of those, but otherwise, things are in really good shape. I appreciate the help that Eric and Paul gave us, and everyone else, and thanks for letting us do your audit.
Were there any other concerns that you listed in the report?
Just the, the credit cards and review of bank reconciliations, because you are a small office, and my understanding that you're doing that now.
Can I just clarify, that wasn't an issue as a recommendation?
Yes, not an issue at all. No.
I just want to make sure where, there was no issues.
Yeah, absolutely. Absolutely.
So you use a clean bill, bill of health?
Yes. Yes, better than a clean bill, I think you guys are doing a great job.
Any other questions?
Just a matter of clearing something up, if you'll turn to page 13.
Mm-hmm.
Of the sentence at the very bottom beginning, interfund loans resulting from an overdraft are not...
Approved by the township board?
It's on the next...
On the next page?
Is it on the next page?
Yeah.
I mean, I don't have it. Oh, you know what, it carries under one on the summary, yeah.
Oh, okay.
I missed it, too.
I got it, I missed it.
Yeah, and I'm not even sure there were any negative cash balance situations during the year, at times, you'll see that, just depending on when the tax money comes in and that sort of thing, and our standards require that you formally have an interfund loan, but from a practical standpoint, if that reverses itself in the same period, it really doesn't make sense to do that.
So there were no interfund loans to speak of?
No, no.
But that's just institutional...
Correct. Standard boilerplate.
Gotcha.
Yes.
Any other questions? Okay, thank you.
You're welcome, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, item G on the agenda, reports. The assessor, Connie.
You have my written report, it's been busy, obviously, being open for Board of Review. We had two very successful outreach programs, and again, I want to thank Trustee Saturn, Trustee Nerodowski, and Highway Commissioner Nerodowski for supporting both of those events, so thank you for that. I understand that there was a late addition to your package, which was a letter from one of our taxpayers, and just to bring it back to your attention, your staff, your staff has helped me more than once with appeals, real estate tax bills, name changes, and applications for homeowner and senior exemptions. Each staff member has always been professional, very helpful, and seemed truly concerned for Elk Grove Township residents. I am a widow of a Vietnam veteran, whose death was recently ruled by the Veterans Administration to be service-connected. Today, I was in seeking a disabled veteran's exemption, Arlene Annette White, excuse me, worked with me and filed the paperwork on my behalf. As has always been my experience with the staff in Elk Grove Township, she was caring and courteous. Before coming in, I spoke with Sandy on the phone, and she instructed me as to what paperwork to bring with me. Sandy also provided fantastic assistance and guidance. You are to be commended for assembling such a fine group of employees. It would be wonderful if all government offices were as easy to work with as Elk Grove Township. I responded very promptly, because we hear these, but God love the people who take the time to put it in writing. Dear Gail, I truly appreciate your taking the time to write to me regarding my staff. It has always been our goal to be of service to our town homeowners, and to treat them with the respect that they deserve. We honor your husband's service to this nation, and your service as well. They certainly go hand in hand. We will always attempt to give you the highest level of service and the respect that you deserve. Any questions?
Just thanks for doing those outreaches, there's a lot of people there who got a lot of questions answered.
We've gotten some wonderful feedback, and we're preparing them for next year.
Any other questions? Thank you, Connie, Clerk's Report, George.
I have my written report, which addresses the FOIA requests, and then the witnessing of the bid openings for the Highway Department. That's it.
Any questions for George? Thank you, George. Highway Commissioner Art.
I submitted my report, is there any questions? We've been pretty busy the last four weeks since the last board meeting. Also, we are going to be working with, we are working with Cook County Commissioner Tim Schneider on a seminar that we're gonna be hosting here Wednesday night concerning animals, because it's a big question coming up now, people have skunks, foxes, coyotes, and whenever something's on the road, we're the first ones to get the call, it's not always necessarily our department, so Commissioner Schneider suggested possibly to get a seminar to educate people from the Cook County Forest Preserve and the Nature Preserve, how to deal with these types of animals, what to do with these nuisances, that'll be here Wednesday night.
Who will be, are we hosting it, or...
The Highway Department's hosting it for the Commissioner.
And who will be attending?
Well, he's putting it on, but it's through the Cook County Forest Preserve, their experts will be here, take questions, you know, inform people.
How is it being advertised? Can we send anything out?
Uh, they've been advertising it, it's been on Facebook, I know Paul put it out, advertised it, I'm not sure if it was in the Herald, so...
I've seen the advertisements for it.
Yeah, I know, the Commissioner's office has been, they put out some press releases, so...
We can put it, we can put it on our website, I think it is, it's already on our website now.
It's this Wednesday, though.
Yeah, it's Wednesday.
The fire dropped, too.
Right.
Any questions for Art? Yeah, no, public comment's over, but you can talk to Art afterwards. All right, thanks, Art. Can I have a motion to accept the elected official reports as presented?
So moved.
Moved by Trustee Saturn.
I'll second it.
Seconded by Trustee Nerodowski. Any further discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Motion carries. Hey, no correspondence, no old business, under new business, the first item, acceptance of the fiscal year-ending 2018 audit report. Are there any additional questions about the audit? The auditor left, but Erica's very well-versed, Erica's very well-versed in the whole, in the whole process, and what the outcome was, so... Any questions?
Thanks, Erica, for working with him well.
She did a great job, Erica, thank you. All right, can I have a motion to accept the audit report as presented?
So moved.
Moved by Trustee Graffia.
Seconded.
Seconded by Trustee Nerodowski. Any further discussion? Roll call, please.
Trustee Saturn.
Aye.
Trustee Nerodowski.
Aye.
Trustee Graffia. Trustee Keenly.
Aye.
And Supervisor Sweeney.
Aye. Okay, all right, so item two, Highway Commissioner's memo request for consent to sell surplus property. You have a memo identifying all the items, and any questions for Art? Did you guys, did you guys get this memo? Yeah, you got it? Okay. Any questions? All right, can I have a motion to declare these items surplus?
So moved.
Moved by Trustee Saturn.
Seconded.
Seconded by Trustee Graffia. Any further discussion? Okay, roll call, please.
Trustee Saturn.
Aye.
Trustee Graffia.
Aye.
Trustee Nerodowski.
Aye.
Just see if you're listening. Trustee Keenly.
Aye.
Supervisor Sweeney.
Aye. Okay, you know, based on the fact that we've provided some funding for Hands-on Suburban Chicago, we've had a longer-term relationship with them, I didn't want to tell them no outright when Paul brought this to my attention, Paul could tell you exactly what they described to us, they said that they, they sent, that there was, they mailed it, but we never received it, and so they called to follow up on the, yeah, a couple of weeks ago, and asked if there was a decision on a budget, but on their budgeted funds, we told them that we never received it, so based on that, I wanted to just bring it to the Board, and let the Board determine whether or not you wanted to extend these funds, otherwise, they're not funded this year.
Can you just review which agency, what they do? I don't remember. Hands-on.
We can go, can you go run and get their information?
It's in there.
What's that, Hands-on? I didn't have it.
What they do?
I'm just, I'm drawing a blank right now.
Well, my understanding is that they provide assistance, volunteer assistance to...
Community organizations.
Other organizations, okay.
Is this different than the, than the situation we had with Kenneth Young, where they, they forgot to submit their invoice, and we said that that's not allowed to happen anymore?
Well, it's, it's, it's different in the respect that if, I'm inclined to believe, I mean, it's a small amount, I'm inclined to believe, we've never had a problem with them as far as submitting their grant applications, you know, yes, they should have followed up, but at the end of the day, you know, I tend to believe that they did mail it, for some reason, we didn't receive it, I mean, that's, the Board, I mean, like I said, I agree with you, I mean, we didn't receive it, we didn't receive it, but that's why I didn't want to just unilaterally make a decision, I mean, that's kind of...
Do we set up a policy following that, or not? Following the Kenneth Young, we had said something, we sent something...
We don't, no, we don't have a formal policy on it, George, I'm, I agree with you, like I said, I, I understand where you're coming from, I just didn't want to, like I said, unilaterally tell them no, figure we haven't had a problem with them in the past as far as receiving all of the information, so...
My people memory, if you will.
Yes, sir.
When did we approve these budgets?
In March, end of March.
They're calling, isn't this August?
Well, yes, I, look, I, all valid points, I'm not, I'm not here to advocate for them, I'm just saying what I, you know, if it got lost in the shovel, I believe they probably sent the application, but, you know, I don't know what's, what actually happened, I'm just letting you know historically...
Thank you.
About what they, they, we haven't had a problem with them in the past, so...
I'd like to consider funding them at last year's rate, not what they requested. I'd like to consider funding them at last year's rate, not what they requested.
Would you like to put that in the form of a motion?
Sure. Make a motion that we give an agency grant of $5,000 to Hands-on Suburban Chicago for the fiscal year 2018-19.
Okay. A motion's been made to fund, approve a grant of, I'm sorry, $5,000, did you say?
Yes.
For Hands-on Suburban Chicago? Okay. Is there a second?
I second it.
Okay. Seconded by trustee Keenly. Any further discussion?
Just a, one question is, do we, will, going forward, are we going to just deal this with these on a one-off basis all the time? Or are we going to set something, are we going to set some sort of policy regarding a failure to submit an invoice, regarding a failure to get a request in?
I think it'd be good to set a policy.
I, I agree.
And maybe have a time limit of if we don't receive it, like this one was a long time. Have a deadline then.
Was there a return receipt requested on the submission?
There was not. We never, I, I agree. I, to let you know, I'll be voting no. I mean, I'm not, all the points are valid points. All I'm saying is, I brought this to your attention for the board to make the call. I thought it was, since they are longer-term, that, a longer-term grant recipient, that I would bring it to the board. That's all.
Because we do have something for a failure to send an invoice. He, the administrator will send a letter at the end of the year, as we decided last year, to remind people that, that you have your final date coming up, and that yours has not been received. And then, if we don't receive it after that, it's done.
So, I, so it is in the grant application already about the language that you're required. So, it's about, so what we talked about, and we can, what, we had discussed, Paul and George and I just discussed about just adding an extra layer of just, you know, reminding them of the deadline in the future. But I think, you know, we, at some point, you gotta, you gotta say no. And I think, I think all the points that were made here are valid, and it's, we're into our new budget year. It's several months past. You know, it's their responsibility to follow up to ensure that we, that we receive their information, so... All right. There is a motion on the floor. Any further discussion? Roll call, please.
Trustee Saturn.
Aye.
Trustee Nuradowski.
Aye.
Trustee Graffia.
No.
Trustee Keenly.
Aye.
And Supervisor Sweeney.
No.
It passes three to two.
Okay. It will go on to next, so that will, it will go on to next month's agenda for a second reading. Okay? All right. All right. Item four, authorizing the execution of a short-term lease with Bryant Properties for youth and family services. Obviously, this is part, this is all part of the continued consolidation. So, we just need, early October, we'll be out of our current property for youth services at 401 West Gulf in Mount Prospect. Have the address located in the paperwork, but it's, just to give you an idea, if you head down Arlington Heights Road north, past Elgonquin Road, and then the old Wellington, the Holiday Inn there, that office suite on the east side of this, that office kind of park, the office space park there, on the east side of the street, is where this property is located. So, as I said in my memo, we saw, I want to say, I think it was about five properties. The, there was two final properties that kind of, you know, it was based on primarily on youth services needs, the space, they made, met all the requirements. And it came down, at least in my mind, this property in the building behind us, one of the taller buildings, and this property here. This, this property allows direct access to youth services. They don't have to go into an office building, get on an elevator, you know, walk around the floor. It's direct access right into, similar to what they'd have now. They'd be able to walk right in. So, that, for me, that was the deciding factor. You know, others' places, there was an office space in a basement with very little, you know, they had, it was, it was just dark and kind of dingy, and, you know, it also had, you also had to buzz people in. So, like I said, I like the direct access, but it's close by as well. So, that's what I just laid out, some of those thoughts in, on this, on my memo. So, any questions for me about...
Is there any outside space over there for them to use?
No. That's, that wasn't one of the, because we're, yeah, we're not going to be...
Short-term.
Yeah. But we did, but based on the needs of youth services, they needed, they needed enough space for group work inside, for group, I'm not, group meetings. So, we made sure that we found enough space for that. But yeah, the outside space just wasn't going to be in the cards. Any other questions? All right. Can I have a motion to approve ordinance 2018-08?
So moved.
Moved by trustee Graffia.
Second.
Is there, seconded by trustee Saturn. Any further discussion? Roll call, please.
Trustee Saturn.
Aye.
Trustee Nuradowski.
Aye.
Trustee Graffia.
Aye.
Trustee Keenly.
Aye.
And Supervisor Sweeney.
Aye. Okay. Okay. Ordinance 2018-09, authors, authorizing a hiring of an architect. Kind of laid everything out in my memo to the board. Essentially, the, you know, this is part of the next step as well. You know, this is just my proposal, what I, what I'm recommending, this particular architect, based on mine and Paul's interaction with him. I kind of laid all that out. Trustee Saturn had a great question about just some additional information regarding projects that they've done in the past, so we provided that today. So, any, any questions for me on that?
Did we get this architect when we went out to bid before we were going to start the consolidation a few years ago? Is that how we got it?
We never went out to bid. We went, it's a professional, it's a professional service. Doesn't have to be bid. What we did is, we went out to all our chamber contacts. We reached out to the GON group that meets here on Friday. We asked for recommendations from elected officials, things we normally do to, you know, to ensure that we kind of cast a wide net. Anybody that can send us any names, contacts, we can talk to as many people as, as possible, so...
Just one other question. Have we talked to anybody at any of the other projects that he's done?
Have we talked to them?
Yeah.
I mean, I haven't, no, we haven't, no, we did not personally talk to any of them. All right. Can I have a motion to approve ordinance 2018-09? Moved by trustee Graffia. Is there a second?
One second.
Seconded by trustee Keenly. Okay. Any further discussion? Okay. Okay, roll call, please.
Trustee Saturn.
Aye.
Trustee Nuradowski.
Aye.
Trustee Graffia.
Aye.
Trustee Keenly.
Aye.
And Supervisor Sweeney.
Aye. Okay. So, based on, I won't rehash everything, but based on the growing casework associated with general assistance and the, and the programs to assist clients, hopefully to financial self-sufficiency, self-sufficiency, which is our goal, it's obviously taken more casework time. It's become more and more difficult to, for Norm, to divide his time and go back and forth, especially with the food pantry work substantially increasing as well. I laid all of that out. So, my request was to hire a food pantry operations manager for a proposed rate not to exceed $15 an hour, but for 30 hours of work. Laid out the, all the tasks associated with that. So, with that, I'll open it up to any questions.
I have a question.
Yep.
Besides Lisa, GA manager, we have Norm, Stephanie, and how many others do we have there?
That's it. Yep, yep. You named them all. Yep. Lisa.
Allison.
See, I thought you said Allison. Did you, oh, I thought you said Allison. Yep, Lisa, Stephanie, Allison.
Allison, Meyer.
Meyer.
Meyer. Okay.
Yep. So, those four, yeah.
Well, it just, I know that the food pantry numbers have gone up a lot.
Mm-hmm.
But it doesn't seem like, I mean, like last month, we only had four new clients and five previous clients.
So, not, so that's what I laid out in the, good question, laid out in the memo. It's not, it's not the number of who, the people that are actually on GA and EA, because our goal is not to build up those numbers. Our actual, the goal is with all this other assistance, all the program, is to hold them accountable and basically say, you know, here's all these programs, let's get you up, self-sufficient. If you don't take advantage of them, then you're not going to qualify for the aid anyway. So, our goal is to, is to actually drive the GA and EA numbers down with these other programs to expedite the process of them being self-sufficient. So, where the extra work comes in is in, you know, the additional applications for job-related services, job follow-up, ensuring people are looking for work, La Heap, and a lot of those things that I laid out there. So, it's, it's with the surrounding programs to assist in that effort to process people, get them additional help, and back to work to keep those GA and EA numbers down.
And just a couple of things. I don't really remember what they stand for. The LIKE kit, what is that again?
LIKE kit?
Yeah, it's under the bottom, in the bottom of GA, additional activity.
Light kits.
Light kits. Light kits. I don't remember what that acronym is. I'll have to find, I honestly, I just, I don't know where else to put my hand.
Just one other question. Like, my husband's in sales, so he has, like, call reports every day of, you know, what clients he sees or talks to and everything. Do we have that in GA for, like, their daily...
Yeah, we, I mean, we track everything in visual GA of the clients. We see the programs, you know, what, what services they're provided, food pantry, EA, GA, other supplemental programs that they're involved in. Yeah, that's all housed in visual GA.
And, and which GA person would be working with them?
Mm-hmm. Yeah, they're all, they're all assigned, as they become clients, they're all assigned a specific caseworker.
Thanks.
Mm-hmm. Any additional questions? Okay. Can I have a motion to approve creating the position for full-time food pantry operations manager? I'll move. Is there a second?
I'll second it.
All right. Seconded by trustee Graffia. Okay. Any further discussion?
This is with the, with the requirements you placed on there. $15, 30 hours.
Yeah, not, not to exceed $15, yeah. Yeah.
Okay.
Okay. Roll call.
Trustee Saturn.
No.
Trustee Nuradowski.
No.
Trustee Graffia.
Yes.
Trustee Keenly.
Yes.
And trustee, I mean Supervisor Sweeney.
Yes. Okay. This item goes to second reading next month. Okay. All right. No, no further items on the agenda. Can I have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Moved by trustee Saturn.
Seconded.
Seconded by trustee Nuradowski. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed. Motion carries. Thank you.